Everybody can join us.
United States of America. As you the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm getting weaker, but yeah, they're getting heavier, I don't know. Okay. We have a motion in for the minutes of the August eighteenth, two thousand fifteen. Right, he made the motion very second to them, yes, vote?
Yes.
Mr. Curry isn't here, but he should be here in the next few minutes. Okay, let's go on down to presentations. Oh, I'm sorry, is anybody saying that? Okay, Dallas is going to talk about the campus improvements, J R O T C. I think we've got a handout. Nice to see you again.
Good to be here. One of the things that, a good problem we've had in J R T C is that we've acquired a bunch of equipment to do our program. One of the things that we've come up in the last five or six years is Raider. It's really grown in the state. And we're actually pursuing something with Dr. Dantonio at the State Department to run a state drill Raider and marksmanship competition throughout the state. And when I went up and met with her the other day and we started this process, which hopefully I'll get in place by October, is I was told to tell her some of my challenges, that I'd love to have a building to store all my stuff in near the Raider course. Because right now it's in my supply room, it's in my trailer, and I'm overflowing. Because I store the stuff for the state, when we go to camp, we run the camp for all of J R T C in the state. So, I took a proposal to her asking for a grant of seven thousand plus to build a building, and she approved it. So, that money should be coming down the financial system, however, I'm not sure how that works. Please, you tell me.
I'll notify you soon, it comes to the county.
So, once the money gets here, we've already went out and talked with a builder. We want, we picked a spot, the site, if you're familiar with the soccer field, and then we have our Raider obstacle course. Right beside that, we picked a spot out sixteen by thirty to get it built. We're going full force, this grant covers a person coming in, building it on site, doing everything right there at the school. So, we don't have to do anything, and it's one stop shop, they're going to do everything. What I'm basically seeking is permission to go this, to get this done, so I can store that, start, hopefully get it done for winter hits. So, and before our October seventh competition to high school.
Let me just clarify for me now, exactly where is the proposed location?
The soccer field, you're familiar with. Then I have the obstacle course right beside it.
Right.
Go another fifteen feet towards the cornfield, and it's going to be right there, because all the equipment we're storing there will be for the Raider course.
Is it kind of central to your obstacle course?
It is, I have a large twelve foot or fifteen foot wall, and then I have a leaning wall, it's going to be just on beyond those, so it's out of the way. And that way, and what's, the design of it is will be a roll-up door on one end and a open door, a single entry door on one side. And what we did was we took a picture of the baseball field, our baseball building, so we could duplicate the same colors. So, we keep that thing going, and they came up with the fact that the roof is galvanized color, the sign is white and blue, and it's a black trim. So, it should add to the appearance of the facility.
Will it be roughly centered with the soccer field?
It's almost dead center.
I just want that's what I was trying to make that up. Now, those people who have made a new road, is that your, are you going to block that or hopefully? I wish you would.
In an ideal situation, I want to have a fence around my obstacle course that will encompass the building. So, there's no, we put benches up, they just go around our benches.
I know.
So, it's, we'll take a bigger structure than benches to tell them where to go. And that's, that's okay, we'll deal with it. But, steps at, one step at a time.
Okay, now as far as the, the cost of this, Bertie, is there any bidding requirement or anything?
Put your total cost down, Wes.
The total cost will be seventy-three, seventy?
Yeah, you'll have to get some quotes on that.
Okay, how many do you need?
Three.
Okay.
And it can be just a written quote, doesn't have to be over cost, right, but still fits right there.
Will, that, is that what you're looking for, here on?
This will be one quote, and you need two.
Yeah, that'll be one.
Okay.
They just have to be identical, you know, here's exactly why I want you to bid on, so everybody bids on the same thing.
Okay.
Actually, it has to be the same?
We're used to that in the military, so that's not a big deal.
Like Bertie said, I can get those, or ideally written, I guess, right?
Yeah, written.
Oh, written, okay. Anybody have any questions or issues?
I was just wondering, you know, I have a wooden floor.
Yes, it is a wooden floor. It's a, it's a, it's going to be sixteen by thirty, there's going to be a work area, bench where we can store stuff and work out like that. It's two by six, we went with two by sixes, it's two by fours, so it's stronger. And we even put a ramp.
It's going to be elevated, semi blocks?
They are bringing bricks, and then I think there's four by fours or four by sixes underneath of it to get another few inches off the ground for that, so moisture can move out of it.
That's why I was referring. And most of them have the two by six runners, I mean, they're building this on site then, not delivering.
Yes, right. And it's because it's too big to deliver. And what we've asked for was the block to get it up high enough so we can get that airflow underneath.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was worried about that. That's a good deal.
Yeah, you guys have some flood zone here.
Okay, but with?
Are you going to try to get it up down the flood zone?
Get somebody to find a flood zone.
We probably have.
Your, your field, your soccer field is right at the hundred year flood zone. If you want to know exactly where the flood zone is, there's a.
Well, if I did that, then I'd have to safety, you probably have to have six foot up in here.
I'm just wondering where you need to have flood insurance on, now if you're going to store anything, or if the flood would.
We are.
Because it will get that high. It will get flooded, doesn't it?
Well, that's flooded, then your building will be flooded too.
No, no, that's my concern, I've seen that area flooded.
I haven't seen it in ten years, so I don't know.
It was about two years ago in school.
Okay, I still someplace else in the world.
How high I thought the ground was, you're feeling?
Right now, we were going to probably top in a block, probably ten to twelve inches. I can go back and modify it to where it's, compared to course when you add, you add cost to it.
The hundred year flood zone is on the telephone pole, where the deputy lives. There's a, there's a nail at the bottom of the telephone pole, about that high.
Is it marked over the baseball field?
No. You'd have to site from it over there to get your elevation, you'd have to site from that telephone pole, and that's your hundred year flood zone. And it's right pretty close to the actual level of your soccer field.
Okay, because I can't, I can't elevate buildings six feet, it would be safe.
I mean, you don't have to, I mean, if you're not going to expect the flood to wipe any equipment out or cause any undue cost that you want to get back, then, you know, that's, that's a decision you have to think, you just need to think about, because the water will get that high.
And showing the building away.
Am I not telling you right, about two years before the school was there?
We'll have fun stuff, I'll be able to.
Well, that's what you have to think about, I mean, there's always the potential for plume, but it may not. But, I guess what they're saying is just, you consider what you're going to have in there, and you have to weigh the frozen cost.
The floodwater is there, it's not got a lot of force, it's mostly backwater. But if you go a little closer to the river, there is some forces you get.
No, we wouldn't go in that direction, that's why we went where we were, because for it to get there, we got a lot more bigger problems than this one building.
I just mentioned it, Bertie, because I thought it might be something.
And I think, you know, another activity for J R, you see the case of these folks, sandbags, see this could be one of your things, you all, that we go out there and kind of protect our building. Okay, yes. All right, anything else, anybody? Sounds like a good idea to me, it's well thought out, the scheme will fit in with the campus. Sounds good. Mr. Meeke, anything?
Sounds good to me.
You okay, thanks? All right, thanks, sir. Okay, next on the agenda is Danny Daley, he's going to talk W B's, sooner to the assessment results, we'll get that out there. It'll be easier than what you have to get out, go ahead.
Probably.
Fred, nice to be joining us. Mr. Curry?
Sorry about that.
You're okay, well, we've only done one thing, about the new building at the high school, so.
I wasn't going to comment.
We were trying to get that in before you got here.
Okay.
You've got to break that, and it's dealt by the builders, they're going to bill us, so they'll be good.
Okay.
Mr. Daley, we'll get serious now.
From what I understand, I'm, I'm limited to four o'clock.
Whatever you think's appropriate, be careful.
I'll try to make it as quick as, as I can here. On your results here, this folder contains all the, all the assessment results in the county and for every school that is available at this time. First tab, on the very first page here, it tells you what the, what this is and what it is not. This is not the accountability data. Accountability data will come in sometime in the fall. And this data is just raw data, this is data that students at the school took the test. We have students that are on our account for us that were only in the school for a thirty days. This is only for data for students that took the test. It didn't want to contain the D L M data, which is the, or the K I T data, the ones that are the special needs or the alternate assessment. It doesn't include that data yet. That will come in when they put those two databases together and for the accountability data. So, this is just raw data. We don't have a date with the scores, when it all be, come together, we'll get our accountability data, we don't, we don't know that yet. It'll be, the second paragraph there just kind of tells you the difference between assessment data and accountability data. And the last one, just some data collection windows, and we have met those. We only had two, we only had two medical leaves in the, in the, in the whole county, and we had six, six students, I think is what I asked for exceptions, and they were on our list, and they were not, we did not test those students. We had to get exemption on the state level. Several of them, they just didn't show up, so we couldn't test them. Couple of them, students we had in a facility, so we couldn't, couldn't test those. And I'm sure that we'll get exemptions of those students, but their, their results right now are in here and counting against us here, so. But I'm sure we'll get exemption for those, it wasn't wrong any of them.
And is it going to make a substantial difference when you get those exemptions?
No.
Statistically pretty insignificant?
The big thing about is, is the number of tests, we have to have ninety-five percent, I want to make sure that those didn't count on that. We did have one student that we elected not to test. We could have, probably went through, got an exemption for that student, but, talked with the principal there, and we just made the choice not to test that student. They are, they have severe motor functions and problems anyway. But we've been, we just chose to go in, accept that on our data against us. We will be sending out, which is not on your list here, but within, between now and September the twenty-third, the parents will get an individual student report. That report is, every parent will get one, and it will tell what the student scored on that, it will give their level. It will tell them what, down at the bottom of the report, it has basically what they did good, and that will be, be sent out by the twenty-third. We do not know the time, because we're going to wait until next Tuesday at the principal's meeting there to get a window. And they'll all be sent out during the same period of time. And the State Department requires this before the twenty-third, the principal must sign off that they've sent this on the twenty-third, and then the superintendent must sign off on the thirtieth that it's been sent. So, within the next two weeks, the parents, the students will be getting basically their individual students for this results. If you flip over.
I'm sorry, the twenty-third of?
This, September.
September.
September, by the twenty-third.
Okay.
And let's see, the next page is just a little, when we go over into the data, you're going to get scale scores, or not scale scores, levels. And the level one is the lowest level, and level four will be the highest level, and that is in the, in the smarter balance test. The next one down below is how the science, the sum of the tests for the science, there are five levels on that, and that's what you're used to, what we used last year, distinguished above mastery, mastery, partial mastery, and novice. And this will become more clearer when we move over to the next page here. If you look on the next page over, which is your first tab, we begin to, to go into the raw, the data here. And there are, across, and this is, the first one is eleventh grade E L A. This book goes in order of eleventh, tenth, ninth, eighth, from down to the third grade on the E L A. Then it starts over, the next tab down the book will be math, it goes eleventh, from down to the third grade. And, and the order, they're all, they're all in order, but a little bit how that this is on the average scale score. That is not the student's raw score. That, the average scale score is a comparison score for the student. They convert their score to a common scale, and they can use that common scale for comparison. Now, if you notice, it has plus or minus, for example, Lincoln County School, High School has a average number, and they have plus or minus eight. They, they will find their scores, their average falls into that area. It's not a, it's a sixteen point range that their scores would fall into. And that will show up, it doesn't show up on this one, but if you go over to the next column, it says eleven percent. And I probably could have done a better job labeling that, but that is the eleventh grade's percentage that they scored compared to the state. For example, on the state, West Virginia was forty-seven percent. Now, percent proficient, now that percent proficient at forty-seven percent, everybody see the forty-seven there to top? That is made up from level three and level four. They put those two levels together, and you have to send, you have to score a certain level or certain score to get into level four, certain score to get into level three, two, and one. They take the, the level three and level four, put those together, and that gives you percent proficient.
This is all the same information in the bar graph too, right?
Yes, yes.
Now, this eleven percent that you have at the top here, are you saying that that would really be down beside of Lincoln County High School? No, the eleven's for the grade level, but that's grade level eleven.
Eleven is the eleventh grade, that's your eleventh grade English students.
Eleven grade percent should be over top of this column. Well, that's what's going to be. Percent needs to be over top of that column.
Yeah, but I could have done a little better.
Okay, that's what they do.
And it's just, the same data up to the top is the, down to the bottom. You have down to the bottom, on your particular paper, which doesn't have it, you have a list of the levels and it explains what each one of those levels represent on the bottom of that first page. Now, the rest of it does not have that, but that one is just for convenience, so you can see what the level is. The idea is to get everybody in level four, three or four grades, and if those, the red and the orange comparison there shows you where we're at for Lincoln County.
Can I ask you another question?
Okay.
Lincoln County High School, two hundred and fifty, what's it, twenty-five, forty-five, what's, what's that? There's one seventy-one, why not?
Because one seventy-one's number six that took the test. Okay, the, the two fifty, first, let's go to say West Virginia, it says twenty-five, sixty-nine, plus or minus one? Okay, that is a, that is a comparison scale, called the scale score. They take raw data and then they convert it into this comparison scale, and that is the number for that comparison. It is, it is the score number for that. Now, how they do that, I don't know.
But the hundred and seventy-one, eleventh graders took this test?
Hundred and seventy-one took the test, yes.
Now, then if I go over to level three and four, are you saying thirty-seven were proficient?
I am saying that level, for, down for Lincoln County High School, the last one, twenty-seven, we're in level three, and ten, we're in level four, which gives us thirty-seven percent efficient, efficiency. Those are percentages there on levels.
Is that percentages or a number of students?
That's a percentage.
Always percentages.
It's percentages.
Seventeen would be mastered, and one seventy-seven, one seventy-one would be bad.
Any questions on that page? Flip down, if you come up, go down to, the next one that changes is the eighth grade, which is three pages down. Everything is exactly the same at the top, but you just have more data on this graph here. It contains Duval, Guy Valley, Hema, and Arts, all of that data together for the eighth grade students. It's a little busier graph on it.
But that graph on the bottom left-hand corner, that's the easiest one to follow. I mean, it shows how the students in, in the state of West Virginia, as eighth graders perform, forty-three percent were proficient. And then it shows you how overall that our students in the eighth grade did in Lincoln County.
This is not, this is for that grade, not overall, this is just for that grade.
Right, well, for that grade. And then you see a breakdown by individual school.
Yes. These are levels, these are levels.
These are percentages?
Mm, they're percentages. Any questions on that one? I want you to get a chance to. As you're looking at this too, the one on the left here, some of these, as you go down, we exceeded the state level on several of these. If you drop down to the next page on the, on the seventh graders, if you look at that, Lincoln County was forty-four, and we had a fifty, and a forty-eight. Compared well with the state of seventh grade English.
Kids hate her, but they love her, because she makes them learn. Old fashioned style.
And if you want to flip down to the next change is in fifth grade. And you can see it's a little bit more, because we had a lot more schools with fifth grade in it. But you can see the, the chart on the left is the state of West Virginia's first, Lincoln County, that's an average of the county and an average of the state. And then you can see how each one of the schools did in the fifth grade. And you see the state average is fifty-one.
So, in, at this particular grade level, in any of these charts, we exceeded the state level?
Yes, we, we had one, two, three, four, five schools that exceeded the state level. If you flip down to the next tab, which will get you, starts out with the math.
Just a second here before we get to the end. Now, is, if you, maybe you haven't seen any trends yet, but with these third graders in all, those lower, not lower, but lower grades, have you seen any improvement in their test scores opposed to the students that are in upper grades higher than them, or maybe you haven't analyzed it that much yet?
We don't have, it's, it's really hard to compare, we don't have anything to compare it against. This is all the data scores we have. We don't have, last year's scores were not compared to this year's scores.
Well, I know that, I've read some things where they were, I guess on the state level, saying that in West Virginia, some of the third graders were actually doing, they were seeing an improvement in the third grade level, more so than in some of the upper levels. I guess this was part of the discussion of those grades that were beginning to teach them certain standards.
Those students would have had four years of the, of the Common Core, the West Virginia Next Gen Standards. But we went ahead and implemented our standards across the board, we went ahead and did all grades a few years back. So, for us, for the past three years, what we've been teaching, the standards hasn't aligned with the assessment until this year's. This is the first time that we've had a true alignment of our standards with the smarter balance assessment. So, it's all kind of fallen into place.
If I may, you know, I guess what they, what the article was trying to say was that those students in the third grade in all, seemed to be doing better in West Virginia opposed to the upper grade students, that had not followed that.
Saw that same article. But I, you know, overall, our students performed well in language arts, and we've, we've seen, we've seen a bump there across grade levels.
Maybe because we implemented three years ago, we wouldn't have that data for the individual students, they would, they would all be the same.
Yeah, like Mr. Baker, a lot has to do with the teacher and, you know, whatever standards, you know, they're going to use their, other ones, their curriculums.
And the mathematics does exactly the same on the second, next tab down, starts with level grade. It's exactly the same data, same type, and the only difference is it is for math maths in those grades.
And this, I guess, just reflects the problems we have in getting qualified mathematics teachers and keeping them, and that we, we are fifty percent proficient compared to the state. Ten percent of our eleventh graders are proficient in math, ten percent.
Yes, as you look at the statewide.
It's the same one as the state. Yeah, but still, we're, we're in half of the state now. As dismal as that is, I was going to say.
You know, you think we put down two certified positions at the high school this past year, and then had, also had a teacher who was on the target year league for three months. So, our sophomores were the ones who were really impacted, and you can see the results, that three percent of the students are tenth grade class proficient. When you look at the state.
Flash wasn't bad. Coming into the high school, it wasn't that bad.
So, you look at the ninth grade and how they performed, fourteen percent proficient compared to the state average, which was eighteen percent proficient. It's like Mr. Baker was talking about, it's, this is an issue across the state, having certified teachers.
Across the country.
Across the country.
I think, isn't two of the other math teachers, aren't they? They not, what, we saw about those other two?
We have one position right now, we've been unable to field. We have an unserved, non-certified teacher, we continue to post. I looked on the State Department website yesterday, there was thirty-one math positions posted.
So, I'm going to, I'm going to go down to the next change in the data here. If you go down to the next tab, there's no other questions on that. The next tab is the science, we only, the, the, the science was only tenth, sixth, and fourth grade. And it breaks down, it's, with the exception of the levels, it's all the same data, with the exception of the levels there, and they have five levels instead of four. But the, the data is exactly the same, an explanation of the levels is on page two in this. But the, the data is exactly the same, and explanation of the levels is on page two in this. So you have three pages of science data here.
And are you saying that only those three grade levels were tested in science?
Those three, those three were tested, yes. And they were actually, this science test was like last year's test, it wasn't the, the new version, the Smart Abounds test.
So, so these results that we're seeing here, I don't know, you can answer this, are not results that are from a test that's designed to test a curriculum we've been using for the last four or five years, or they are?
For the first time, the assessment this past spring aligned with our standards.
And, and this is the assessment from this past spring?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that true statewide?
Yes, that's true across the state.
And if you see that, you know, the average on this one here is, to get your percent proficient, they average, they take mastering, above mastering, and distinguished. Now, when you add those together, every now and then you're gonna come up with one that says it adds up to twenty-six rather than twenty-five, or, and that has to do with that plus or minus on the score. As far as I could, close as I can figure out, it has to do with that plus or minus, that in that range, that it doesn't, not every time it comes out the same. And I think this is one, on the tenth grade science here, thirteen, ten, and one should be twenty-four. What it says is twenty-five, and the only way I can figure that out is because of that plus or minus in that scale. But you'll notice that some, it does some of the others that way, too. There's no questions, we'll drop down to the next tab. It should be grades three to five, ELA percent proficient. Two thousand fifteen should be the title of that. It should look like this. The next one down. What that is, is grades three through five, I took all the scores and averaged them together, um, in, in each one of the scores. And for example, if you go across, it's the same data as before, it's just a different way to comparison. For example, if you look at the blue here under Duval, the first column there, a fifty-seven, the first column fifty-seven, that means that their third, fourth, and fifth, and I took the average of all three grades, and then that gave me a fifty-seven percent average, and I compared it with the state in how that they're doing in ELA, three through five. The fourth grade is your orange, and in your lighter blue is the fifth grade on those.
Okay, the fifty-seven is what grade?
The fifty-seven was the Duval, I just picked it out.
Well, I'm just, there's three columns there.
Thirty-one is your fourth grade, and the fifty, light blue, the fifty-six is the fifth grade. There's a, um, down to the bottom there.
On our sheet, it looks like the grade, rather than a light blue.
Okay, this one here looks kind of blue.
What does the fifty-seven represent?
The fifty-seven, I took the average of third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. I took those three scores, the average of it, and got the average.
Third, fourth, and fifth, right? And that's fifty-seven, and then the thirty-one is the fourth grade?
Yes.
And the fifty-six is the fifth grade?
Yeah.
I guess what got me confused is, how, where's the third grade score, why isn't it showing, if it's being?
It is, it's fifty-seven.
It's your first column, that's third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade.
Well, I thought you just said that was an average of the three.
It's an average, it's an average of all three of them.
So we don't really have a score for the third grade?
You, up in the fourth, up in, before you do, are you sure?
Yeah, 'cause you're, you got, you're, down at the bottom, I mean, what you're showing is that that's in percent proficient. So when I look at that, it looks like Duval's third graders were fifty-seven percent proficient, fourth graders were thirty-one percent proficient. And the fifth grade was fifty-six percent, so there's no average in there.
That's where I'm confused. There are only three bars.
Well, I have.
There's no column in here where you average third, fourth, and fifth grade by school and give a percentage for it.
You're right, that's, that's wrong. I'll think about another data.
And what these percentages represent is not percent of proficient, but percent proficient compared to the state level.
Right, yeah, everything is compared to the state level here on it, yes.
All right, we're, okay.
Matches up with your earlier graph, what I read there.
Yes. It is, I was on the wrong chart, it's down below this. All right. Does everybody have an idea of that one?
Yes, sir.
Flip down to the next tab. Now, there is the one that has the average in it. I took three through five and just, just wanted to see what it would look like, and that gave me, uh, this one here gives the school an idea of kind of overall what they're doing in three through five in English. And for example, Duval, now that is a average of those three grades, the forty-eight percent. So, and if the state here is West Virginia's forty-seven point three, and that's also average on the state level. So Duval, if you look, compared it to, overall, in the elementary school, they are above the state average. For example, Ranger is way above the state average in elementary school. I haven't got the cart before the hole or something, that was when I looked at it. Same thing, the last two pages is math, and you have, it heats over with math, and, and, uh, the same thing with math. Is there any other question on this?
We probably have a lot of questions, but I can get to looking at any something.
Okay.
Next time you address this.
If I, is there any question on what it represents? That's a big thing, I wanted to make sure you understood what I.
And again, these are, this is preliminary?
Yes. This is just raw data.
Just a quick question, in, in previous years, I've been, I've been told that the special ed data impacted our scores quite heavily, and dragged them, I don't wanna say down, but, but had a disproportionate impact on, you know, my ability to present them, shall we say. You said at the beginning that this doesn't include?
No.
So are the positive elements that we've heard today likely to fade once those are included?
Uh, deal with the, I think the special ed students are factored in there, only a small population.
Okay.
The, what we used to call the APTA, and now they take a test called Dynamic Learning Maps, and that's probably, was forty students, that, oh, what, right there, it was about forty on that? Forty-three or something like that.
What's the whole lot at?
And, and in the, in the past, they did help our scores tremendously, but that assessment changed.
Okay.
They also went to a computerized assessment, and it was much more difficult than what the old APTA used to be.
Okay.
Now, would that have an impact statewide, too?
Uh, yes.
So wouldn't this be impacting Lincoln County?
Yes, it would, it would statewide. It's the APTA's, the whole nature of math mastery is the dynamic learning.
I got an email back, they said they didn't expect the results to influence that much. They didn't expect it to have a big impact on them.
And I, and it's, while we're in the session, I've got some great news to share, I just received this, will you, Teddy, will you give this to Sean? Make sure he sees that, and bargain at the very top. You'll find the humor in this, well, look at the, look at the date and time.
Three AM, okay, well, I'm on duty at three AM, so that's all.
I've just received this, this, I think it was Friday, I believe it was, these are our ACT scores. Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, I've been around here for a few years, you've been around a few years longer than I have. This is the first time that I can ever recall that we had such a game, and it's in all disciplines. If you look for two thousand fifteen, the five-year trends, our ACT scores improved across the board. I, I cannot recall, Mr. Snyder, one time.
And that's a nationally normed test, too, not a statewide exam?
You know, so when you look at these results, and you compare that with the results of how our students were doing on the math portion of the Smart Abounds assessment, you kind of scratch your head just a little, you say, hmm, you know, so, but, you know, this, this is awesome, that our ACT scores have been, been improved across the board.
Well, this is a smaller substance, we only have certain students that are taking the ACT rather than the entire student population, than the majority of student population, so.
Typically, we're all doing very well, aren't we?
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I mean, you think about three percent proficient, you know, one grade, and you think, maybe some of those kids, some of those.
Still, the trend, even in the past years, it was that same group of students, right?
So I just wanted you all to see.
And Sean gets on the bargain page.
Can't be trusted apparently.
Tomorrow night, right?
Tonight.
Or tonight, three AM tonight. Tells us the number of students tested on it. It's a hundred and fourteen.
Yeah.
Uh, Lincoln High School, yeah, eleven thousand two hundred eighty-nine statewide.
Well, what's our total population for the graduating class of two thousand fifteen? I mean, we, a hundred and fourteen students tested, how big's that class? How many did you have last year?
One eighty, one ninety.
Ninety-nine, I think.
Graduated.
So a hundred and fourteen out of a hundred and eighty-nine, that's.
Well, actually, this would be. And, and some sophomores.
Oh, it's two.
Total number of two.
What grade's that?
So this would be any students in grades ten, eleven, and twelve.
How many sophomores taken, though, is that common?
A handful, we usually discourage sophomores.
Still, I mean, you're probably looking at one fourteen out of, what, four hundred, five hundred between the three classes? Is that right?
Four fifty, yeah.
So you get a, well, we're getting a quarter of our students that are eligible to take the test, have taken it. That's probably not bad compared to statewide, is it?
It's about the same, 'cause I'm thinking it's roughly twenty-five thousand students across it.
Well, regardless, Mr. Snyder, it looks like there's improvement being made because it's been compared in the past years. Keep up trend.
Are you have a question for me?
Everybody, anything else for Mr. Daley? I don't think so, thank you, sir, we'll be back to you after we look at it, scratch our heads. Anything else about that, Mr. McKeever? All right, I'm sure that'll be something we'll talk about more in the future. All right, let's go down to, we'll switch gears from academics to Dana Smith and maintenance. Get a little update.
Cough my way through it. Okay. Well, we've got a new fire marshal, Lynn Pail, and he'll be here August thirty-first, Dana. And I've sent out messages to all the principals, try to clean up things a little bit, pass some power drills, and be ready for you. And we're over at Lincoln County High School, we're digging the ditch and putting the electric in for the new Lincoln County Science, if you're interested in that.
Are they doing that now?
They're doing it today, yes. Uh, my guys are doing that, and then we'll have, to have a, a state inspector come to look at, give his brief one, and then we'll contact the electric company. We've already wrote their check for the part that they'll do, which is run the electric down the pole and into our meter.
Okay, will this give us the capability, if we would want to have a floodlight protected, if we wanted to?
Yes.
Okay, what about the other part of that, is the, has the sign company completed their work? I mean, they still have to put the lettering on the old sign, all that.
And the painter.
Or do you know where?
I don't know where they're at on that, no.
Have they finished?
They've sent us the bill, sir, I know they're planning on doing it soon.
They'll pay it?
Yeah, I won't.
Now, but they finished Guy Valley and Duval?
Yes.
Or United?
Yes, and we've gotta run the electric to those.
But I mean, from their side of it, then they've done everything except put the lettering on there.
Except for the painter and the lettering on the sign, yes.
Good leverage, then, for you.
Yeah.
All right.
Uh, the main reason I was asked to come here tonight is to talk about the parenting round at Lincoln County High School. This is a project that started back in the spring, me and Dana and the parenting class teacher, and she was wanting to get grants to install some restroom facilities and like storage room inside that classroom. And, uh, she, since then, has received a couple of grants, and an additional grant to pay for the cabinetry. So the scope of the project originally has changed quite a bit, so we're gonna have to kind of start out fresh with our bidding process. The project originally had the cabinets within the contract of who she was trying to get to do her bathroom facilities. Different companies wanna do that with a different grant, so we need to take all that out. And today, I talked her into putting one commode instead of two. What she wanted was, uh, she's got cabinets, she's got a ten-foot wall, she's got two-foot cabinets on one side, two-foot on the other, so she's got six foot of space, she's wanting to put two commodes and a sink, and I think that's a little tight. So she's gonna take one of her commodes out, and have one commode, a small sink, and then an adult sink within her cabinets, and I think that'll work much better. And she, she's agreed to do that. So, changing the scope, uh, right now she has two bidders, uh, as you've just heard, we need three. So just in case we can't get that third one, uh, I'm gonna put an ad in the paper, advertising, an illegal advertisement in there, advertising, which will get the burden of proof off of us if we only end up receiving two bids. There's another company that's willing to bid on it if we pay for the materials upfront, and they can't wait on their money a very long period of time, so I don't believe they're gonna be interested in this project.
This project, in itself, is it, is it become different than what was proposed to us, as far as what was planned to be done there?
Uh, just, mainly just the commode, the funding has changed a little bit, and the scope with the original contractors has changed a bit.
I can't remember the details, but it's something to do with the plumbing.
Yeah, when she presented, someone first came to us, say, all they had to do was go through the wall with a piece of pipe, that's what it was. Now they're gonna have to.
It's, it's, it's much more complicated going through a wall with a piece of pipe to get the sewer. The sewer's probably about two foot under the concrete, you're gonna bust up a lot of concrete.
Yeah.
And of course, she wanted to do it this summer, but she couldn't get three quotes, so, and I, I kind of thought the project might have went away until Mr. McKeever told me about it a couple of weeks ago. So I got back on it, and it, the money's there, uh, but it is more complicated going through the wall.
But I mean, but even with this complication, they have the money to take care of that?
Yes, I believe they do, uh, but, you know, she wants to do it on a weekend, that's gonna change the scope of the project even more, so. I think we need to wait till Thanksgiving break, she has agreed to try to have that as a, a goal, to get this work completed. I don't think you want the dust and concrete being jackhammered in the, during the weekends, that's gonna change the whole price of the projects for most companies. And so she's, she's willing to wait till Thanksgiving.
Yeah, what we were told was that if we, it ever ceased to be used for that. Yeah, what we were told was that if we, it ever ceased to be used for that purpose, there'd be no problem going back to the original. Well.
No.
If I'm not right there, Mr. Christian?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't, you know.
And I think Mr. Snyder was here when she.
I guess you can take commodes and cabinets out and cement the pipes and, I mean, there's things you can do, but there's going to be some things to do.
It's, I mean, is this a regretful, Mr. Snyder, are you, or the changes she's made?
Yeah, because I think what Dana said about the smaller number of commodes, I guess, were, was huge for, you know, six feet, you can't put anything in there. And again, we'll just use it for those students during that parenting class, the smaller kids that would be in those classes would use us, I don't think you need to do anything, I don't think.
That's where we're at, where to proceed.
I think so, yeah, as long as you've got the money, we got the time.
I'm waiting on the windows.
Windows. The last I heard was middle of September, but I, I'm afraid that's going to be delayed a little bit too, of course, I'll try to find out. I'll find out and get that information too, so you can up that board, if I can get a real estate page. They seem to be moving rather slow on getting everything ordered.
While we're on the windows, I think from now on out, we need to put a time limit on these projects. When they bid them, they're a bit completing, I mean, like the generator at the high school.
But you can do that.
I mean, the windows should, we should have in there that they completed before school started. And the generators should have been put in while school was out session.
I agree, it would have been much easier.
Now, and I think we need to consider putting time limit.
Having a reasonable amount of time.
Reasonable amount of time, yes.
They'd like the generator, I mean, that's been months.
Yeah, well, I mean, I can understand the windows a little bit because we're a little late to bid them out, but.
It's more complicated.
Yeah, it takes you to have made and stuff.
And over at Duval, did we, since it's been declared a federal disaster, did you get any reimbursement from FEMA, are we expecting any?
I sent the applications for relief yesterday. We should have a kickoff meeting at the nine-one-one center scheduled soon. So Lincoln is one of the counties that's been declared a disaster, so I think we will get relief, yes, yes. The minimum amount is like three thousand, just a little over three thousand dollars, and we're way above.
Did we end up replacing the fence along Route Three by Duval School?
No, repaired, Mr. Williamson.
Dana, did the people at the ball field give you a list of the things that they supposedly lost in the flood?
They verbally told me a few things, they have not submitted me a list with itemized prices like I had asked.
So you would like to have it?
Yes. Not, there's not a rush, but I'll meet it at the time. Yes. Now, they don't need it for the insurance company, the insurance company will pay on any of those type things.
And FEMA might.
FEMA will, FEMA usually will. If we've got it itemized, especially, and I've asked for pictures of, of the items also. And they'll, they'll pay our deductibles on our insurance company, or they have in the past, or I think what they're going to do in the future, that they always have.
Anything else that's pressing?
What's the status on the generator at the high school?
They're changing the gas line. They, I guess they got an outdated gas line, during the process of changing it and making it bigger. If I were going to estimate, I would think it would be done within a week or two.
Anything else in the maintenance or anything, anybody have any questions?
We had the gas company doing, they inspected the jar, and there's some separate issue with the way the gas was being.
I knew that.
So they're going to have to redo some things.
When it's completed, does the state fire marshal come down and inspect the generator?
No, if, no, state fire marshal, state fire marshal wouldn't be interested in that. As long as he's a certified electrician on electric work and the gas company approves what is done on the gas work, we should be in good shape.
Well, the fire marshal hall is covered, definitely.
Yes, is certificate. Fire marshal issues. They won't, no, I don't think so.
Were you involved in the proposed high school football field, soccer, track area, are you involved in that, in the crossfire?
The only thing I've done is put an ad in the paper to ask for somebody to come in and dress the field up and see it. That ad is in the paper currently.
Do you know when that concludes?
End of the week, I believe.
So this is the second week it's been in the.
Yes, yeah.
Now, well, the people who are interested, would they meet with you and go over the?
The only, I, I did call GL Stone, and I've asked to meet with him over there, we haven't done together yet, but. He's the only company that's called me and inquired about the bid.
You know, on the survey that we had done, the eighty-five-hundred dollar survey, will those elevations and all that are reflected in there allow this person, I mean, do they have the ability to use that to make this bill what we want?
One, one really doesn't have anything to do with the other.
Somebody has to make sure the thing plumb, that it's not flat.
If you were going to put drains in, then, then yes, if you're going to, I mean, it's already crowned, the property, you know, it's part drains.
Well, mind you, Danny, correct me if I'm wrong, one end of the field is much higher than the other. And our goal was to try to get as close to possibly as a plum field with, to get that phase completed, so that later on we could come in and do the track, maybe in spraying or whatever we choose to do there, and then eventually do the field turf.
If, if you plant the field in grass, you're going to come in and you're going to dig everything up.
Well, you're going to dig a football field up, but you're not going to dig up all this surrounding area, and that far corner down there should be, the way it should never be disturbed once this is finished.
Well, what we've got in mind, Dana, is whoever works on that field is going to use a transit and get it right. We're not, we're, and I'm not sure if George Stone or Allen, has he got somebody that can read a transit?
I, I believe he does, I guess, I don't know to the extent of how right you want it to be.
We want it right. Precise, we want, like I said, we want those far ends to be exactly plumb, so that the only thing, when the day would come when we'd get field turf, is they had to come in and just disturb the football area, but the far ends of it should be, it shouldn't even be disturbed.
One end of that field is at least a foot lower than the other end.
We don't want them to cut, just sight, visualize, what, you know, get it fairly, the way it should be. It should be what we get it, the way, get it ideally plumb, the way we want it to have, and we come up with some funding maybe to build the facility down there, the, that we've talked about that would be on, maybe that would be another phase that we wanted to, we could have that, you know, that could be done independent of us ever dealing with the field itself.
I think part of what you're saying too, though, is that if we did put in a perfect surface at some point in time, the level of the field would have to be taken down to incorporate the drains. So what level do we go to now? Do we go to a level that's above?
And for your track, your, your level's going to even go below that. So you'd be, if you're putting track and drains for your football field, you're going to be at all different levels. What I understood you wanted to do was to level the field so that it'll be crowned and drained, and so you can seed it and make it look.
Make it look like a large football field.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I think GL Stone's could, could use a transit and do that.
That company, that turf company, did they, have they got a benchmark out there someplace?
They've got elevations shot, but their elevations wouldn't have anything to do with what we're trying to do as far as.
Yeah, but it does, it has anything to do with where they want to be with face starting.
We're not going to be where they're going to start, is what I'm saying. We're going to be at a lot of different levels, you're talking about one project and the other project is two totally different elevations.
I don't understand why the football field won't be the same elevation where it's called turf or.
I don't either, he came in here.
The middle will be crowned, but the.
Yeah, but the drains though, when, if you remember how the turf is set up, it's multiple layers of material, so you would go below.
And so is the track, so is the track.
Well, why couldn't you have a plum field and dig down to whatever those, however far it could do that?
Well, you, you could without disturbing the outer.
Yeah, why don't, why don't you know what the level of your track would be if you had astroturf, why don't you know what that is now? I mean, did he leave any elevation marks out there that would tell you what the level of track would be if you had astroturf?
Well, that would have been in the depth, the next stage of the.
Well, that eighty-five-hundred dollars, what did we get for that?
You've got elevations, you've got.
Besides tying the flags to the weeds. They're gone.
You got the position of the field, you know it'll fit, you know where it can sit, and you have elevations shot.
Elevation of what?
To dig out for the field, you're going to dig out a different elevation than what you guys are wanting to plant grass.
Well, we know that, but the elevation in the field, when it's, if it was finished with astroturf, do you know where that would be? Do you have an elevation mark out there for that?
That, that part hasn't been done yet. That would be in the next stage.
Well, so what if we, what if we go the other direction and we take it down to the absolute minimum level we would need for drains? Do we know that from the drawings that we have? I mean, presumably, you're going to have a base level of, of rock, if I remember, when they come into astroturf. So if you take everything down to that level where you would be before you start adding rock in the astroturf plan, do we know those levels?
That's possible, yes.
I mean, I think that's the level you're looking for, Fred, but then do we run into more trouble with having to come back in and fill the track or something else that doesn't have as many levels of stuff? I think that's what Dana's trying to point out.
Well, and, and you, you've got a different crown for a turf field than you do a grass field. Well, I think there's probably about a foot difference in the crown.
Well, the crown, you can tuck a dozer and take it home.
I don't know anything about any of this, but, well, I, and I readily admit that, but to me, if I were playing in the dirt, I would make a flat surface, and then knowing that this is going to have to be, one of these days, hopefully in our lifetimes, they're going to come in with turf, I would go into that hundred fifty, thirty yards, whatever this football field and all that's going to be, and I'd dig down in there so far down, every how far it takes to get to the turf and the drains and all that stuff, and everything else could remain the same, and I'd just dig in the center and dig it out and put in my turf. Now, once again, I realize that's a very.
Yeah, that's what I don't understand, if that turf takes six inches or eight inches, I don't know what he said or took now.
And allow for the drainage, whatever that is, why can't have all the things, the way it would be ideally in the end, and then with grass now, and then one of these days come in and cut that rectangle out in the center and put drains and a field turf in there?
And bring it back up to the.
Yeah. Well, you'd only cut down part if you have to go.
If you're going to plant grass, you're going to have approximately six inches, inches of topsoil that you're going to have to take out. So you'd want to be at least six inches above the level of the gravel where you'd start gravel, you'd at least want to be six, six inches above that. Because when you, when you take out the grass, you're going to have to take out a certain amount of topsoil, get down to the level of your gravel.
Once again, me being totally novice about all this, I don't see why any of that would matter if the whole thing was plum and square, flat, whatever you want to call it. And when I got ready to do my astroturf thing, some point in the future, I'm going to come in, take out that hundred and thirty or forty yards, allow for everything in the center, I'm going to cut that out, whether it be a foot or two feet or whatever, I'm going to dig that out of there. Everything else is going to remain the same, but I'm going to dig out the appropriate amount and may put in drains and put in the, all the different levels of whatever's underneath the astroturf and turf, so that when it's over, it's going to be flat just like the rest of it.
I, I think we're, we're talking in circles.
Well, I know, but we're, we're coming back to the same place, and we're not on the same page here.
Well, but I think where Dana started is where we're all trying to be, actually. Without another set of drawings that we don't have, we don't know what that level is to take everything to right now.
Well, they, they should, they should have marked the elevation where the top of that astroturf would be when it's finished.
What, what we should look for is this, if we can take the drawings we have, determine the highest point of, of the complex, be it the track or be it the level of the astroturf, everything should go down to that level right now, nothing below it, because then you're looking at field. So if we can take the drawings we have, maybe it's worth spending a few thousand dollars toward having the next stage of the plans drawn up to determine what that absolute minimum, maximum level is for now.
Now, that we could probably do.
I mean, I, I don't think we want to take anything lower than the highest point we anticipate if we ever put a stadium in there.
Well, I agree.
That we could do, that's the first time I've heard that, that we could put that in there.
Well, that's the first time we've thought about it in this level, this level of detail.
Well, I never thought of anything any different, but Dana may confuse you, because the way I was envisioning, he was thinking, is that we were going to be lower in some places than eventually it was going to be when we were finished, but if you're saying that everything would be at the higher level, then maybe we are on the same page, if we got that information.
Well, I think that's, that's the information we need to have, it doesn't make sense to, to waste money taking anything below that absolute maximum level right now.
Your highest level would probably be at the outside edges of your track, just thinking.
But your track's going to, your track's going to be banked on the end.
And, and it's going to be probably fairly close to the center, center of your football field.
Crown of the football.
What about the parts that aren't?
It's still the topsoil.
Football or the track, but I'm getting, I'm getting, however far that is away down to the other end where the complex and all that's going to be, shouldn't that be at the same level as everything else?
The level of your complex, it should be close.
I want it to be the same, why wouldn't you, that's what I don't understand, why the whole thing, it's much bigger than a hundred yards or a hundred and fifty, whatever that center part is. You've got this whole three hundred yards of whatever it is out there, all of that, why can't all that be the same level? So that the complex down here, one of these days when it's constructed, isn't ready to be built right here, we're going to put it right here, it's the same level as where a field's going to be now or in the future? And whatever is at the other ends, it would all be the same?
I was thinking you'd probably, where the athletic facility is scheduled to go, which is over there between the track and the lake area, that area is lower.
Exactly.
I would think you'd want to build that up.
There we go, make it a flat all the way from one end to the other, from over by that corner to the, out by the river corner, wherever that is, that all that is the same level, and then you just deal with the center portion.
You can't put it all at the same level, we're not going to have any drainage.
Well, I'm, once again, I don't know what's going to happen in the middle, I'm talking, get away from the fields themselves.
I'm talking about the whole plot of land, that whole plot of land's got to drain.
Right now it drains fairly, fairly well.
Was that a crown at all?
Well, I don't know, whatever, yeah, I agree, if it has to drain, then allow for that, but what I'm saying, don't do something and then have to come in later on when you get ready to do something, and then say, well, we're going to have to get out here and fill this in, and we're going to have to fill over here, but, you know, take that into consideration where it has to drain. But I, what I'm saying, you don't want to do something and then have to come back later on and start filling here and there, and you got to put in.
What you could actually do is go out there right now and see a spot that is where you want your finished product to be. And then if that's low there, fill it up, but you need to pick a spot out, out there that's the level that you want. And then take a transit, I mean, you can eyeball it, like you've been doing.
But I agree with that.
But you can slope everything. But you can slope everything a, a, a little bit and you never even know it.
Well, the survey crew originally did the survey for field turf is from at nine Mike River, same. We could find out what the highest point is, whether it be the center of the field or it be the edges of the, outside edges of the track, and have them go over there and mark that.
Yes.
Are you willing to spend the kind of money that it's gonna take to get that up to that level?
What did we get for that first, uh, what was name that outfit of, Mr. Christian, you got to come up there and do something? What did we get from Lance? Anything?
Had like a design of the.
Design of some buildings that would be nice to have. And mostly it was about the athletic complex, but I've not seen any of those on there. I don't think they did anything as far as surveying the property, placement of the field. They did none of that, that's what field turf did.
There was wasn't really spasm or something.
Theirs, theirs was just a.
There's a pretty drawing.
Yeah.
Simple follow-up, but you all tell me if you disagree. What we need to do is determine the maximum usable area we hope to have out there. We need to mark the boundaries of the maximum usable area. Then we need to know what area the football field and the soccer, and the track are gonna take up within that maximum usable area.
Exactly where that's gonna be.
Okay, they need to exactly where that's gonna be. Then the rest of it needs to be taken down to this crown, to the height of the crown of the football field or the edge of the track, whatever that would be, and then slope just enough on either side to make the whole property drain. I mean, even though we know where the football field's gonna go, or would know, why not do the same thing with the whole piece of property in terms of having it slightly higher to middle so it drains off both sides? That makes the entire piece of property usable. I mean, I know you can't, because the, the plan we picked has a football field at an angle, doesn't it?
But still, in the end, it's gonna have to take that into consideration and do that. But we, looking at it now, it appears that one corner, that one is much lower than the other. So, but, you know, I agree with you, it has to drain, but there's no, I just wanna understand why we would go and do something, knowing that one of these days we're gonna have to come back and go over and do it again.
Well, I think we, first step is to determine, are we gonna take everything down closer to the low level, or are we gonna build the low level up and just level everything else? We need to know what the elevation is, that's step one. What is the absolute highest point? What is the elevation above sea level that we want the highest point out there? We have to know that before we can drop the first dozer blade in there.
We thought we already knew that.
We're close, we're close. We're close to that.
What do we have to do to get closer?
Well, I need to find out for the field turf, the, the highest elevation of, whether that be the edge of the track or the center of the field, and what elevation that is. Have the surveying company that was here doing the original come back out, mark the field, and mark the track where it would be, and stake it off to where that elevation is.
So that gets back to our original question, these people who are interested in doing this work, that they would have the ability and then have the proper, uh, whatever you call that, where all that information was provided, to be able to do that. Well, the survey crew that field turf hired, you'll be able to tell us what we know, right?
Yeah.
But then the company that we eventually give this bid to would have, have the ability to read that and do all that type of work.
Well, I don't know if they would even be interested in doing a project.
Who are they?
For, are you talking about field turf?
No, I'm talking, well, I don't know.
Would they, are you asking, would they be interested in coming in and doing the excavation?
No, no, no. Well, you have to make a bid off if they want to, but I'm, one, we're wanting field turf, somebody comparable to them, to give us the elevation information. Then I'm talking about the people who eventually bid on that once it's known, if they had the knowledge to be able to read that and to do it, what we want, not just visualize.
I have a little better idea on what you want, but on previous discussions, I really didn't have an idea of what you wanted.
Well, I think we all had our idea, but we didn't convey it maybe very well.
I agree. Okay, well, let me go back.
To the drawing.
To field turf and see if I get, can get some elevations on where the highest point is, whether it be the center of the future field or the track.
Well, field turf came in here, we told them we were gonna put that, that turf down. Where would they get their elevation at from right now?
From the survey that we've already done, that it's not marked, that was gonna be the next stage.
They've gotta have something on the building or someplace that they're gonna figure it great off of.
They do, I just don't know what that is. If I can find, try to find that.
Because pretty given of that job, they, they were to create it down there.
They or the surveyor they hired has that information, it's deliberately not.
Got there someplace.
It's deliberately not conveyed to encourage you to go to the next stage.
Well, if you remember, there was a face of architectural prints and, and that's where all that other stuff is coming into play. Now, they may have, in order to, for us to purchase the turf, they may have deleted some of those fees for the rest of the survey. We, we won't know that unless that's the way we're gonna proceed. They probably won't delete the fees if we're gonna go out there and sow grass.
Now, whatever it requires us paying some additional funds to get the information we want, then that seems like what we're gonna have to do. If we already paid for it, I don't know.
I guess one of the questions I've got is, do we use the two hundred thousand dollars that is consolidated to spend on getting this grass sown and leveled where it's gonna be?
That's what we've said all along. You know, we've gone ten years not making any progress at all, and that's what we were saying here, we've got that money there, let's utilize that money to taking the first step and at least getting the field at the level we want it, so then we can add these other phases as we have the ability to do so. But in the meantime, we get it to the level we want it and do the things we've planned.
They have track on, so that it is a high source.
Well, probably what I'll have to do is extend the bid deadline. Extend that, that'll be the first thing I'll do, and I'll wait and see what information I can get, report back to you guys, and get the next stages of costs to do what, what you're looking to do as far as getting it closer to the.
When we put out one, then I think we need to go back to what we said a while ago. Now, when we bid this out, we want you to be able to complete this job in this period of time. I don't have any days, sixty days, thirty days, but not a year and a half, you know. It needs to have a set, definite time they want, that we wanna finish once we get to that point, bid to them. Okay, anything else? We bid that or it's death? It won't be the last time we talk about that football field.
Nope.
Mr. Snyder, you gonna get in there, you just for the.
I'm saying that to. Do you have any questions for me? I'll answer the best that I can.
Okay, Mr. Snyder, or Mr. Smith, you're finished, aren't you? Anybody, anything else to Dana or another, if not, we're gonna take a break for a moment, please?